Chapter 231 PL 1975. The adequate notice of this regular meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided by the posting, mailing delivery, and filing of this notice on October 6, 2020. This notice was on that date posted on the bulletin board in the township office, sent to the Korean News, the Echo Sentinel, and TAP into Warren, and filed with the township clerk of the township before, all in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. Please rise and join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Ms. Amber Carr. Are you able to say here?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Ballish.
Yes.
Mr. Bishi.
Here.
Mr. Brazee.
Here.
Mrs. DiMaggio is having trouble getting on. Mr. Franco.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Zahn.
Here.
And Mr. Bellman.
Here.
Mrs. DiMaggio, are you on yet? Thank you all.
Mrs. Stone, could you please?
Of course. Resolved that the Board of Education approves the public and private session minutes of the October 5, 2020 board meeting.
Second, Brazee.
Ms. Amber Carr.
Yes.
Mr. Ballish.
Yes.
Mr. Bishi.
Yes.
Mr. Brazee.
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio. Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn.
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Correspondence and information, Dr. Mingle, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Bellman. There was one HIV investigation at Central School. HIV was not confirmed in that case, and the board received three emails related to the return to school topics.
Thank you very much. President's remarks. Good evening and welcome to our October 19 meeting of the Warren School Board. Today was the first day of Hybrid 1.1, our new five-day in-person experience for our K-2 second graders. While this is an important milestone in our back-to-school plan, we must be aware that Somerset County and New Jersey as a whole have moved from green to yellow, which means a moderate risk on the New Jersey Department of Health's COVID-19 activity level index. Today, we also saw an increase in the state's seven-day rolling average for new positive tests above 1,000 for the first time since late May. While this is not a reason to panic, this is a sign to be careful and considerate of all members in our community. We each need to do our part to stop the spread of COVID-19 by adhering to the recommendations provided by the professionals. It is on all of us to ensure that schools can remain open, small businesses can remain open, and that our community can remain safe. Only if every member of the community works towards this common goal, we can continue to enjoy these benefits together. If we move in the wrong direction and we move towards orange or red on this index, we will see an impact on our community, and we will be forced to move backwards on the reopening plan. I continue to commend our teachers as to commend our teachers as they show great flexibility and creativity in their delivery of lessons and their outreach to all students. Please take a moment to send a teacher a note of gratitude and commend them on their effort. As we look towards next week, I wish you and all the children have fun and safe. I love you. Thank you. Moving over to the superintendent's remarks, Dr. Mingle, please.
Thank you, Mr. Bellman. I'm going to echo several of your comments there. Before I do that, I want to recognize one of our graduated eighth graders from the spring, Neelash Sagaran, who we celebrated quite a bit in the spring, but we learned today from his teacher, Ms. Sarati, at the middle school that his TED Ed talk from his grade A class last year was selected by the TED Ed organization across the country as one of their top TED Talks from students in the entire nation. And so he will be featured on the TED. I think it's actually already live on the National TED website. We don't exactly know what's going to come with that recognition, but we do know that it's significant, and we should definitely celebrate. And I'll make sure I pass on those celebratory words to Mrs. Sarati on his behalf for her support of him, for sure. As far as the return to school plans and responding and updating even some of the information for Mr. Bellman, in Hybrid 1.1, we know our K-2 students returned five days today. Thank you to the staff members who were involved with everything, from scheduling to logistics to storage to planning for the transition to the instruction, parents for timely responses to those various different survey questions and re-registration information, patients with the homeroom assignments, bus routes where we had to make changes, and in some cases, some slower drop-off and arrival, although things went remarkably well for the first day with more cars in the parking lots and everything else. As Mr. Bellman said, and I want to echo, our ability to stay open is really now our number-one priority. So we've done a huge amount of work over the last six months to be able to have our schools open to the degree that they are. We know that we have friends and neighbors and colleagues who, in some cases, are just opening their doors for the first time to students this week. In some cases, they haven't done it at all yet. In order for us to stay open, we all, everybody, staff, students, parents, the wider community, have to make sure that we remain vigilant and committed. The mayor posted about this last week. The township health official posted about it last week. We're very concerned about the numbers around us. We've had, as the community knows, there have been two positive cases within the school district. Those are shared with the people in those buildings. But I'm more concerned about the number of contacts of contacts that we're currently monitoring. So while we may have only had two cases directly associated with students and staff, there are tens of cases of people who are one step removed from a positive case right now. And as we all know, we hear about these things through notices from sports teams or from other schools. You know, it gets closer and closer, and people, we all get nervous. And we have a lot of events coming up in the near future that are high-risk events, especially Halloween. The township put out some guidance about Halloween celebrations that I will echo in this Thursday's community briefing. Nobody's suggesting in Warren that we shouldn't celebrate Halloween, but we need to make sure that we're very careful and safe about that. We've had numerous students share with their teachers in the last week that they're planning on going to parties that have 70 students at them or more. That's a big problem. And if we want our kids to continue going to school every day or even two or three times out of every five, we all have to take responsibility for the community efforts to not expose ourselves to unnecessary risks. I'll share more again on Thursday. We're concerned about traveling during the teachers' convention weekend. We're concerned about Thanksgiving and the holidays. All of us, for our own personal lives too, not just in our roles as school district employees or as board members, but as parents, as children, we all have things that we want to be able to do. But the state is at a yellow risk level, which makes it more rapid when things have to shut down. So there were school districts just today where two positive cases led to a shutdown of that entire school for two weeks. Where a week ago, it might not have been the same decision because of the change in the state's risk level. So I just wanted to share that. I know none of us want to hear that. We all want to go back to normal. But the only way we can keep kids coming to school, which should be our number-one priority, is to make sure that we're all as proactive as we can be. We'll be discussing potential Hybrid 1.2 information, our various return-to-school committee meetings, even this week, that will look at areas like special program offerings, like our ESL programs and special education. The change in the state risk level will definitely slow some of those discussions down because any additional bring-back of more students would put higher risk into cohort mixing, transportation, and everything else. So that is on our agenda. And as a reminder, I know that there are some people who said that they didn't see the September perception survey. I want to make sure nobody misses the October perception survey. For our parents, students, and faculty, it'll be next Thursday, October 28, in the community briefing, so everybody has access to give us feedback about how we've done in the first two months and areas that we can improve on moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Bellman.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mingle. Moving on to presentation. This week, there is no presentation on the agenda. Moving on to discussion, as there is no presentation, there is no discussion, or does any board member want to bring something up from? I see none. Moving on to committee reports. Any board member that wants to share a committee report? Mrs. Taylor, please go ahead.
So the curriculum committee met this evening before this meeting and discussed a few things. We talked about we talked about that parents should have all received their individual student reports for the I-ready test that the students took. We also just briefly just reiterated, the last time we met, we said that 10:05, we would have, we made a board resolution to remain on Zoom. So we just talked a little bit about that moving forward. We got an update from Mr. Kimick on the gifted and talented program and what kinds of changes we need to make in order to move towards getting students, all of the students at all ranges, the services that they need. And then we talked a little bit about what I talked about with our just making sure that we have some community effort around student interactions and our HIB incidents to figure out ways that we can try to reduce that. And that was it.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Taylor. Any other committee reports? Mr. Mingle, Dr. Mingle, please go ahead.
The ad hoc return to school committee met last Wednesday. We talked about the Hybrid 1.1 implementation planning. We also talked about the difficulties in finding and keeping qualified substitutes. We always have that problem, but it's even more pronounced now. If there's anybody watching this Zoom call or the video afterwards who is interested in substitute teaching in the district, that information's on our district website, or you can reach out to Sandy Dodd in my office. We'd be happy to have you participate that way. We talked about the initial thought process around a Hybrid 1.2, and we previewed the discussion that we just had about the potential impact of worsening regional health data. At the time we had the meeting, we didn't know it was going down, but the signs were pointing to it. So that's it.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mingle. I'm not aware of any other committee reports outstanding. Seeing none. With that, we want to move to public commentary. This is for agenda items only. There is another section for public commentary for any topic. For this, please focus only on agenda items. Each member has three minutes. It's in blocks of 15 minutes. Please turn on your camera so that hearing impaired people can also see the lips moving. Please start your speech by reciting your name and address. And please use the raise-your-hand feature. You can reach that by clicking on the bottom of participants, and then you will see a blue symbol, raise hand. Right now, I see nobody raising the hand. I will give it another 30 seconds. Mrs. Croweza, please go ahead. Mrs. Rosa Croweza, please go ahead.
Sorry, Rosa Croweza to Holly Drive. So I would first like to start off by addressing the issue with the IEP Stevens. We had a meeting with Mr. Reza last week, and the frustration of parents, myself included, is just about to boil over. Our kids are regressing on a daily basis. We need to get a plan to put these kids back in school. I mean, it's imperative. My own child is struggling on a day-to-day basis. We got his I-ready scores. My head's about to spin. It's, we're still not getting modified assignments. It's, nothing has changed, and I'm getting very frustrated. His speech therapy is being conducted, you know, via Zoom. It's not working. It's not working. The services are not working. You have to, please, think of these children. Keeping them home is not working. And we've asked metrics. What metrics are being used? No answer. We get no answers. We, parents, are getting frustrated. Something needs to be done. We understand. Enough of the fear-mongering. We know what parent we need to do. We know when we need to go out. We know we need to put our masks. You know, just stop with the fear-mongering. We know what we need to do to keep our children in school. But we need to address the issues because our children, on a day-by-day, are regressing. So that's my first question. My second question is, when we write into the Board of Ed, why are none of our emails responded to? So I was looking at the district policy, and maybe I misread it. Maybe I want some clarification. The district policy, 9130, on public complaints and grievances, goes through this whole step of what needs to be addressed. I have yet to gotten, I don't even email any of you board members because we never get a response. It's, oh yeah, we received it. So who cares if you received it? What are you going to do about it? What are you going to do about it? I would like to know, what is the proper policy for when we send an email? How do we get answers? Or we just don't get answers? Those are my two complaints, which it seems like I, you know, it's always, all I do is complain. I love the teachers. They're great. This has nothing to do with the teachers. It has to do with the administration. We've got to get it together. We've got to get it together. That's all for me.
Thank you very much for your contribution. Mrs. Mariette, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Mariette Jelitovic. I live at 18 King George Road. I'm just asking a question. I know that we got the I-ready scores. I was wondering if the teachers did any personal assessments for reading as well because some of them, I felt like were reflective of where I thought my child was, and others, I didn't feel like it matched with what I'm seeing their capabilities at home, of their capabilities at home. And my second question is, there are services that we've, I know you guys have talked about, and I just didn't know if there was an update on any of them, like ASAP reading or things for kids who don't have, don't qualify for IEP but who are struggling. And I was, I know that the teachers are being spread very thin, so this isn't a criticism. It's more of a question as to whether or not the reason why some of those services may be putting on hold is because the teachers are being utilized. So I, like, I know, for example, like, the kindergarten, you're having a reading specialist be specifically with the online learners. I think that's great. They absolutely need it. But first and second grade are also incredibly pivotal years for reading in third grade. So I was just wondering about ASAP or any of the other reading programs that are designated to hit people who don't quite qualify for an IEP but are still struggling. That's all.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Singleton, please go ahead.
Rachel Singleton, 22 Delaware Trail West. I was just wondering if there was any comparison between the DRA for reading and the new I-ready? If there was a chart or a scale so that we could compare what the child had this year compared to previous years? What was on grade last year and where that stands now? So that we can see if there's been any progression or regression. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Right now, I don't see anybody else raising the hand. I'll give it another 15 seconds, 10 seconds, 15 seconds.
Hey, Chris.
Yes.
Hi, this is Jamie Taylor, 54 Sawmill Road. My question really is related to Hybrid 1.1. I have a series of questions, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but I'd like to sort of revisit why there's 26 children assigned to one section of second grade. I thought that that was inconsistent with what the board voted on and the criteria for keeping ratios per the state mandate were a lot lower. So I'm just curious as to how we are, number one, having a homeroom that exceeds those state guidelines. Number two, I want to also know why the kids now who have tested and received scores through the I-ready tests have not been placed with similarly situated kids within that distance-learning cohort. We've received our scores, and I know that, for example, my son's not placed with children who are in the same level. So just curious as to what the thought and what the thought process is and how that's going to be reconciled. The third issue. Why? And I don't know if this is an issue that will be rectified as time goes on, but how are the Hybrid 1.1 students expected to keep up with their peers in the, in learning, in school learning, when they're being asked to wait so others can catch up? In, for instance, I think Woodland and perhaps some students in the ATL cohort are on the same track. And now they're being asked to wait for the Central and the Mount Harb students to catch up in lessons. And meanwhile, their peers who are in school learning are moving ahead in lessons. So that's extremely frustrating as a parent, and I would like to just hear an explanation as to how that's going to be rectified and reconciled when we were promised that our kids would be receiving equal education on the same terms. And that's why we chose this model, right? So to keep, you know, our family safe. So I just want to understand, you know, how the district is planning to address that.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, one more issue. The other issue is, we were also told that the district would also keep a connection to our homeschools, meaning, you know, if we're at Woodland. How, I have heard no plans about how we plan to keep that connection for Hybrid 1.1 students.
We have reached the three-minute mark. Please wrap up in the next 30 seconds. Thank you.
Thanks.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Mrs. Meredith Lando, please go ahead.
Hi. First of all, I have to say, oh, Meredith Landau, 40, Christie Drive, Warren. The middle school is doing great, and my teachers are amazing. But I just have a couple of questions. I wanted to know what were the recommendations from Mr. Kimick regarding the gifted and talented program? And I wanted to know what percentage of a normal year's curriculum is going to be covered this year as opposed to a normal year? And I was just curious what the administration is offering for the kids who need additional work. So, for example, my son is finishing his work very quickly, and the teachers are giving him extra work, but I'm wondering if there's any way or program to be giving kids that need additional work extra? Because this has been, you know, eight months where you might have a child who was really engaged, and now they're without challenges. That's also a dangerous situation. That's it.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Lando. I can see Denise DeCorso. Please go ahead.
Hi, this is Mrs. DeCorso. I'm at 205 Sterling Road. I just want to touch a little on the subject, Jamie, kind of, Mrs. Davy touched on a concern that I had personally with the I-ready student reports that came back. I'm also noticing that we, as remote distance, were placed with teachers, but I don't think they have been grouped according to these testing. And I would just like to know how we're going to rectify that moving forward because I think it's a complete disservice to our children who are attending all these various schools if we are allowing them to sit back and not partake in lessons that the schools, that they primarily would be in, are moving forward in. And then my second question is, on most of the meetings that I was able to attend, I'm curious as to, I was under the assumption that we were going to be split, and we would have one teacher per, I think it was 1 to 11 or 1 to 12. Again, we have 24, 26 students, and we have two teachers. I also saw a third listed on my curriculum when I went into Genesis. So how is this going to affect my child changing to a third teacher potentially? And are we, are we looking at this overall? Is it going to be the ratio that we discussed? Or are we just learning according to what's good for now? And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As there's a lot of questions asked, our normal mode of business is, we'll collect all these questions, and administration will answer them all afterward. I see Mr. Davy raising his hand. Mr. Davy? Amit Davi? No?
Sorry, me again. So one other.
We normally don't allow that participant to speak twice until everybody was heard, but let's see if somebody else.
Okay.
I see nobody else. We still have time. So yes, Mrs. Davy, you can talk again, please.
So the other issue I wanted to raise is the change in policy. And Dr. Mingle, I know I've corresponded with you on this previously, as well as yourself, Mr. Bellman. I raised the issue that, you know, the current board policy that's in effect and that would govern the Hybrid 1.1 model allows for full-distance learning parents to make requests to their principal and to the district to transition from full-time distance learning to to the in-person model. And the district has up to 30 days to make accommodations for that request. I noted that in the agenda, there was a proposal to amend that policy. And I think that the public, you know, deserves to be able to weigh in on that before such a change happens. And of course, that change would not have, would not be effective retroactively. So it, in other words, the district should not be able to prevent any parents from switching models. And certainly could not do so retroactively. I think that that would be illegal. That's it.
Thank you very much. We are at the end of our first 15 minutes, and I'm not seeing anybody else raising the hand. In that case, I'm handing over to administration to answer the questions that were raised today.
Thank you, Mr. Bellman. So first of all, let me address the questions about Hybrid 1.1 and remind everyone that our teachers haven't even gone to sleep once since the first day of Hybrid 1.1. And so they met the students in their, if they had a homeroom change in the distance sections today. And so while I understand there are questions and people might have concerns, we need to give people at least a little bit of time to be able to adjust to a new model and a new expectation. That goes for the students, the parents, and the teachers, and administration, and everybody else. So I haven't debriefed with principals or anybody yet about those questions. I know the question about the class size I did get during the day today, so I can address that one about why it was set up today the way it was. It's important that our students feel a sense of community in their new sections, just like they did in the beginning of the year. And so all the students were together, even at the kindergarten and first-grade level, where there's only enough students for one section. There are two teachers, so they were all in one big group. In the second grade, where there are 24 students and there were two teachers online today, they're meeting for the first time. The two teachers were assigned to the entire homeroom so that we could The two teachers were assigned to the entire homeroom so that we could specialize the expertise of those teachers, meaning in the literacy section versus math section. So in the instruction will take place. Students will have one or both of those teachers at various times in a 13 to one ratio. Just like we talked about, the other important piece is, we can't get substitutes to run a distance learning homeroom. And so if we don't pair teachers where they know the students in both sections, there's no way that if one of those teachers has to be out for a day, whether it's COVID related or not, a sub can't come in and take that over. And so it's important that we connect those classes so that both teachers can step in and run the whole class if they need to. So that's why I was treated that way, but the instruction will take place in a 13 to one ratio. They need to get into the first few days here. The one other piece of that that I can address today about why aren't we grouping students by their I Ready scores is we never do that at the elementary level. So that's not something we do under normal circumstances. We don't move kids around for their permanent homeroom assignment or their math class or something like that. Our philosophy is that all the way until seventh grade, the students are in mixed ability classes. And again, it takes some time for that transition to take place. I can't get into the specifics of individual students here today. I don't know them that way, but we can certainly follow up on those questions. I took note of all the hybrid 1.1 questions so that we could talk about them at our leadership meeting. As far as the other topics that came up, as far as the chain, I'll go backwards from my notes. The change in policy about changing models, you know, I did share this with a couple of people who reached out to me. We have maxed out resource allocations. So if a parent requests a change, for example, from distance to in-person right now, there are schools where there are no open seats. And so it doesn't mean that we can't possibly find a solution, but it means the solution could be something like saying your child now has to go to a different elementary school. Or we have to come up with a whole different model of how we're going to deliver the instruction. It's not impossible, but that is one of the drawbacks of bringing more students back as we took up classroom space. In certain schools, we do not have the ability to add more classrooms based on space and staffing flexibility. So the questions about ASAP and gifted education and so on, yeah, we've pulled a lot of those specialist teachers to run smaller homerooms so that we can have students in homerooms that meet the distancing requirements and everything else. There are pros and cons to all those decisions, but that's a reason why we can't just let the flip of the switch make changes. Similarly, I'm going from in-person to distance. If we had more students in distance than we planned for, we don't have the ability to just create a new teacher position right now. This actually came up in a committee meeting. Even if the board wanted to authorize and the community wanted to support us hiring 20 new teachers, they don't exist. Their marketplace right now is empty of teachers looking to go into new situations. So we have multiple positions that we would love to be hiring a leave replacement teacher that we can't find a qualified person for. And we're not going to put somebody who's not qualified, obviously. So it's really challenging to make differences back and forth. And so the language change proposal just reflects that resources of notwithstanding, we will accommodate a request if it comes, but if we don't have the resources available, we would have to change the model for the whole entire school district if we went over that one. And I don't think anybody really wants that to be the case, that if one family changes their mind, we suddenly have to re, you know, reshuffle an entire school or something. So it's not an easy process, but that's why there's that tension about making changes. And I think that actually goes back to some of the other comments about stopping with fear mongering and that sort of thing. And we sent a letter home today to parents at Central School about a positive case. Immediately, there are half a dozen families who want their students not to come to in-person school anymore. Even though there was no exposure in the school building, there was no risk in the school building. That's what happens as the things get heightened outside. That's not fear mongering. That's the reality of what the responses we get. And so as we try to work with individual families, it's really hard to keep the entire operation afloat. We work really hard at it. We have contingencies for various things, but it's not easy to turn on a dime with some of those some of those concerns. But let me address the the other questions here about. We also agree that it would be great to prioritize students with certain special needs, not just students with IEPs. Some students with IEPs are thriving in a certain, in a hybrid model. Other students need to be in person. We have made accommodations when an IEP team has recommended that even already. Whether that means changing the days or changing the program in some way, that is the next area that we want to be focusing on is what, where, what's the next level of student needs? And whether that be special education or students with English as a second language services, for example, the process for getting services is is the intervention and referral service system INRS. The building principals at each school can help with that. So if there's a parent who feels their child does not get into the resources, the services they need, that starts with the classroom teacher, but there's a whole team at every school that meets regularly. They analyze all the data we have, not just I Ready, but as somebody asked, local data that a teacher might have. And they come up with interventions that can start immediately. Regardless, you don't need a label or an assigned service, but that can start immediately in the classroom. So that's INRS. The school buildings each have a team that can help with that. Mrs. Singleton, I don't know if there's a comparison chart between DRA and I Ready, but that's something we can look into. And if there is, we can share it out through the community updates. Hold on one second. As far as recommendations of students who need more, just like in any other situation, any other school year, that all starts at the teacher level and finding out what what is happening there. The, there's a difference between services, like in the E2 program. Work has been done to make sure that the staff member who delivers that program, who helped get launched the whole school year with general education settings is available to be offering the E2 services. There's a difference between that and just somebody who maybe needs a little bit more enrichment or challenge within the regular class setting. So that happens from at the teacher level, at the team level, at the middle school, at the teacher level, at the elementary schools. And as always, I encourage everyone. Starting at the teacher, go into the building principal, if it's a curriculum instruction issue, then go into Mr. Kimmich. There are several comments that haven't come through that process, so I don't have answers to them right now, but I would be happy to follow up on them if they come through there. I I think Mr. Bellman and I addressed the questions. I kind of went in different orders. We have another public commentary, so if I didn't, we can address them there.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mingle. And yes, as Dr. Mingle stated, after the regular items for board consideration and the other other agenda items, there is another section for public commentary. Was that I'm moving on to items for board consideration action? Is there any one from the board that wants to pull out an item? I want to pull out item D, our new policies for discussion and separate votes. Mr. Breezy, please go ahead.
Mr. Bellman, would we be able to pull the C block as a separate vote, please?
The whole block?
Sure.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Franco, please go ahead.
Just C5. The first line is supposed to be there. Referencing the Personnel Negotiations Committee and then references to curriculum goals.
Thank you, Mr. Franco. So we should just, we don't have to take a motion to change it, but it's Personnel Committee should be the reference there. We can address it. Thank you.
Good catch. Thank you very much. Any other?
Mr. Bishi. Yeah, just a, and similarly, a quick note on C6, the very last date in that attachment has an extra digit in it. So I think it means June 30th, 2021.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bishi.
Mr. Breezy sent that to me. I forgot to announce that. Yes, so the date 20, obviously 2021 at the end of that attachment.
Any other agenda item that should be? I'm speaking now. Where's that? Mrs. Stone, what was the first item that was pulled out? Was that this D block from Mr. Breezy?
All of blocks C and D. Would you like me to move A and B in the meantime?
I think so, yes.
Okay. A motion to approve items for board consideration, section 12, item A1, items B1 through B11.
Second amendment.
I'm sorry, who seconded?
Amen.
Thank you. Ms. Ambarcar.
Hi, I'm Stain.
Mr. Bellish.
Yes.
Mr. Bishi.
Yes.
Mr. Brzee.
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn.
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman.
Yes.
Motion's carry.
Mr. Breezy, would you like to discuss item C or just a separate vote?
Thank you. I think just a separate vote is fine. No discussion needed. Thank you.
Wonderful. Mrs. Stone, could you please?
Motion to approve items for board consideration, section 12, items C1 through C4, C5 is amended, C6 as amended, item C7 through C12. Do I have a second?
Second.
That, Mr. Franco?
Mr. Bellman, may I make a comment before the vote?
Sorry, Dr. Mingle, please go ahead.
I should have had this in my opening comments. I just wanted to recognize that Mrs. Sharkey, who's our supervisor of special services, the board knows this, but for the public, her resignation is on the agenda because she's accepted the role of Director of of Special Services in the Oracle Public School District. I want to congratulate her on that and thank her for, she's been in this role for about four and a half years with us and for the Central School parents who are on the call, who maybe, I know you already got a letter that explained this, but we'll make sure it's a smooth transition between her departure in January and Mrs. Tujia coming back. And if there's any gap at all, Mr. Kimmich will, you know, a face well known to everybody will take care of that gap. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There was a motion, there was. Ms. Leonat?
Ms. Ambarcar.
Yes.
Mr. Bellish.
Yes.
Mr. Bishi.
Yes.
Mr. Brzee.
I'm staying.
Mrs. DiMaggio.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn.
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman.
Yes.
Motion's carry.
Thank you very much. For agenda item D, I want to move two policies out for discussion. First, I want to move out policy 1648, the remote learning options for families. In this, we have language that disadvantages our families in the district. I don't think that we should take out the language about the 30 days. We would have to accept new students that move to the district. We started with this, our remote option. I don't think it's fair to now retroactive change that. And therefore I would ask to take this part out of the recommended changes. I hear some feedback. Do you hear that as well? Mrs. Byshadi, is it possible that this is yours? Could you please mute yourself for a second to see if that will improve it? Ms. Ambarcar. This seems better. Thank you. Did everybody understand my concerns from the board members? Any other comment from board members?
Mr. Franco, please go ahead. Mr. Breezy after.
Yeah, it's my understanding that this change is being made in order to ensure that we can move into hybrid 1.1 without much interruption. And it is also my understanding that if, as mentioned earlier, if there are several additional requests for people to change models, that it could potentially jeopardize our ability to execute 1.1 and then force everyone back into the hybrid 1.0 model. So, and maybe there can be some confirmation if my understanding is correct. But if that is the case, I would support the change in the language because it should be more difficult. If it's going to cause the entire district to have to reformulate its position in what program is being offered, then it should be more difficult to bring the kids back. I mean, that's why we're doing it because of the numbers. And if the numbers start changing dramatically, then we can't, we can't execute. So maybe, Dr. Mingle, you can confirm that my perception is correct. And if it is, then then I would support the language change.
Yeah, that's an accurate depiction. So I'll give a real example, which is at Central School and a certain grade level, every single classroom has the number of students that we are maximum allowed to have and keep social distancing. If one family asks to come back, we will have to make a decision to either violate physical distancing, which we're allowed to do according to the state, but it's not what we've done in this district. Or require that student to go to a different school, which means we'll have to transport them across town to whatever school that is available, if they have the right to transportation. Or add another section, which is not necessarily possible because of classrooms or teacher availability. So that's why we recommended the language that says resource available. If there's four seats in the classroom and somebody requested, it's not a big deal. It's when we're at the capacity.
Mr. Breezy, please, and then I want to comment as well.
Thank you, Mr. Bellman. It was actually a clarification question. Was there one piece of this or the whole, the whole 1648-02 that you were looking to?
That was specifically, my request was specifically to the changes where we changed the language to remove the 30 days. And add just that it is once a year or something like that.
No, I, you did, I was pulling it up as you were saying it. So I, now that you say that, I recollect you saying that. So I apologize that I missed that. But I'm reading through it again now. So thank you.
And I have a feeling our policies should be for our students and for the families supporting the students. If families don't feel safe, they should make changes. If families think there is a better option for their child, if something is not working out, they should be able to make that change. What happens if a new family moves to our town into that school? We have to accept them. It's the law. So why should we make it more difficult for our existing families? We have to be creative here. We have to find the flexibility for these parents to ensure that their students need, needs are met.
Well, I would like my student in school full time right now. Can you meet that need? He's in third grade.
And that's what?
This is the problem.
Mr. B.
This is, it's not, you can't have a customized system for each student. The fact of the matter is, if we get a bunch of new students in the K through two grades, there's a very real possibility we have to go back to hybrid 1.0. Because we just won't have the capacity to keep the kids in in the building. So by making changes in either direction, apparently it seems, I would think it's easier to go from in-school to to remote than from remote to in-school. But certainly if we have a flood of kids that if, I think, I think the number is, what, 26 second graders are are in the remote section, is what I'm hearing. So if if 20 of those kids decide they want to come back into the building, it's just not going to be possible from what I'm hearing. And then all of the second graders will be on a hybrid system. Right? So there, you have to make a choice. There, sometimes your own choices are bad and worse, right? So it's, you have to draw a line somewhere. And I think that the language is reasonable.
Mr. Breezy, please go ahead. And then I want to comment as well.
So thank you. My, this might be a validation or a maybe not. But in that, I'm asking because I want to make sure I understand the situation. So I appreciate, certainly appreciate the dialogue. In the, in the situation of a new family moving into Warren and us needing to meet their needs presumably in school versus remote. We, the district could in the exact same fashion, have that family go to a school out of which they are zoned. Because I don't know if it's a policy in my head, I think it is, but I don't know the number offhand, unfortunately. But I think the same situation would apply to that family as would apply, if I'm reading this policy correctly, as would apply to this situation. I don't know if the administration has thoughts or if I'm wrong, please tell me I'm wrong. I just want to make sure.
No, I can address that. Yeah. So we tried, first of all, we tried to anticipate. We, there's no way to anticipate people moving in, obviously, but we tried to anticipate kindergarten families who took their students out to go to a private kindergarten. We surveyed all of those students. We were trying, we built in allowances for them, at least to help at the kindergarten level. But, Mr. Brzee, you're right. Our existing board policy, and I don't know the number off the top of my head either, allows us to assign students to any elementary school. The zoning is our preferred transportation zoning, but we have the ability by policy to assign students to a school based on resource allocation. That creates different problems, though, because we also have to then provide transportation, which is a different, which is a big challenge.
Of course, all of that should remain true, but nonetheless, we should provide these flexibility to families. On the other hand, we have allowed families to make a decision right now. Now we are changing the possibility. Can they now make a change to their decision? Because their decision could have depended on that flexibility to make changes. If you really adopt that policy, I think we should also allow them to make changes that to everybody that made the decision before.
In our K2 reregistration, everybody checked a box saying they understood that there would not be an opportunity to make additional changes that, so I understand what you're saying.
what you're saying. Um, we, we tried to get ahead of it as best we could. It was in the presentation as well. So the way everybody knows, the p- policies are the board's purview. If the board's policy is that we allow changes at any time, we will implement that and we'll figure it out. Um.
Was that, I want to put that to a separate vote.
Um, we'll just point a clarification though. Allowing everyone to, or allowing anyone to make changes does not necessarily guarantee that the existing model was still, can still be maintained. Is that correct?
Right. We would do everything we could, obviously, to.
Right, of course.
Yeah, yeah.
But there's no guarantee, right?
You might have to come back and, that's the, that's the reason why. So the minimum notice the state requires is 30 days. We have accommodated changes. I don't even think we made a single person wait 30 days. We've been extraordinarily, um, responsive, I would argue, to, uh, our families who have requests. The reason the 30-day minimum is in there, most districts have set policies that say it's once a year or twice a year, that they could do it mid-year or at the end of the marking period or something like that, is to give us time to figure out a plan. So if we knew, one of the challenges is they come in and, you know, one comes in today, one comes in on Thursday. If we know ahead of time and we have a cutoff, um, we can plan for that. So one of the other recommend, in the Strauss ESMA model policy, the choices they give you include at the end of the marking period, to the end of the semester. That's another option, if the board wanted to go with one of those things instead.
But all, the only thing we're asking for here is that the language we modified to say that it's subject to available resources.
Right. That's the recommendation that came to you. And, and so the public is aware, policies don't become effective until they've been approved on first reading and second reading. So nothing is approved tonight either way.
All right. Chris, you wanted to pull that for a separate vote?
Uh, first I want to hear Mr. Bishi and Mr. Balish. I saw a hand or was that not a hand?
Yeah, I retracted my question. Thanks, Mr. Bellman.
Mr. Bishi in that.
Well, Mr. Bellman, just to be clear, so it's the subject to available resources phrase that you don't like?
Yes, we should provide every parent the opportunity, not just in one school, but equity across the schools. One cross has the, one school has the flexibility, the other school does not have the flexibility. Here we should be able to, um, accommodate all of our parents' requests the same way and not create a situation where different schools handle things differently. Okay. Thank you. If there is no further question, I would pull that for a separate vote. Mrs. Stone, could you please? And then I want to come back to another policy.
Um, what other, what all, ju- just, yeah, I mean, what other policy am I pulling? Otherwise I'll move the balance of the policies.
Yes, I also want to pull 2464 gifted and talented students. So we can probably move all the other policies without the 2464 and 1648.02, the remote learning that I just had discussed.
All right. Um, motion to approve items for board consideration, section 12, item D1, except policy number 1648.02 and policy number 2464.
Second, Bellman.
Ms. Amber Carr?
Except, yes.
Mr. Balish?
Yes.
Mr. Bishi?
Yes.
Mr. Brzee?
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mrs. Stone, could you please, uh, move 1648.02, remote learning options for families?
Motion to approve items for board consideration, section 12, item D1, policy 1648.02.
Do I have a second?
Second, DiMaggio.
Thank you. Ms. Amber Carr?
Abstain.
Mr. Balish?
No.
Mr. Bishi?
Abstain.
Mr. Brzee?
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman?
No.
Motion carries.
I also want to discuss 2464 gifted and talented students. Thank you very much, Mrs. Lando, for mentioning it earlier. Um, I have a feeling that lately we are not providing our gifted and talented students, um, the appropriate resources. In elementary school, we moved down from four resources to one. And now I can see language in this policy update that is removing the, um, explicit, um, measures that are taken to identify gifted and talented students. And we're also removing from this, um, policy language about what programs should be offered. In the past, we had pull-out programs, classroom differentiated instruction, acceleration, flexible pacing, compacted curriculum, distance learning, advanced classes, or individual programs. All of that is now replaced with very generic language about the district's, uh, discretion, pretty much what to offer. I don't think that this is in the best interest of our students and that we are not, um, accommodating those students that are in need for a little bit more challenge appropriately. That's why I don't think that this is good language. Warren district should be leading in these things. And my, um, recommendation would be to, um, give that policy to the curriculum committee so that the language can be adjusted to match Warren and not use a boilerplate that would receive from our, uh, policy language provider. Any other committee, uh, the other board member that wants to, um, add something? Mrs. Taylor, please go ahead.
Um, yes, I'll add that I agree with you, um, for the reasons that you just stated, but also because I would like to do more work on it to, um, expand our ideas about giftedness in the district and be more inclusive.
Thank you. Any other board member? Mr. Breezy, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Bellman. Uh, I was curious, perhaps administration, if there was background on what has prompted, um, that the draft suggested changes in this particular one, just so I have a little bit of context. Thank you. Yes. So the state legislature passed a, a law related to gifted education sometime back in the, it's all a little fuzzy right now, spring, winter-ish, that went into effect for this school year. So Strauss ESMA had to update the policy language, and you see they reference NJ SA, whatever it was in the, in the language. Um, so it's a, Strauss ESMA certainly didn't intend to change any local policy, but they wrote it around the new law. So the specific things Mr. Bellman brought up are in those Strauss ESMA regulations now. Um, not a big deal if the board wants those to go into policy instead of regulation. Either way, they would be, um, in, in effect. Um, and in curriculum committee, we actually talked about this for a few minutes, and I suggested it would be bringing it back to curriculum would be a good place to review it. It's not a, it's not pressing from a, like if it doesn't, if it takes us another month to get the final policy, that's not going to change anything about day-to-day operations or anything.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle.
Thank you.
With that, I would like to make a motion or I make a motion to not approve that tonight, but move it back to the curriculum tea, uh, sorry, curriculum committee and charge them with revising the language to match our district's needs.
Second, Brzee.
I just want to confirm that the motion is to return policy 2464 to the curriculum committee for review and modification?
Yes, please.
Thank you. And that was Mr. Bellman and Mr. Brzee.
And Mrs. Stone, we can only discuss this motion if there's exactly about that.
Yes.
Please go ahead.
Yes. Uh, the motion being to return it to curriculum committee, and my question relates specifically to what we're going to be asking the curriculum committee to do. Um, I presume that before we see this again, um, for a vote, this will have been reviewed by council. It is important, of course, that, I mean, there's a lot of leeway we can have with how we implement policy, but the policy itself should be in compliance with state statute. So having the curriculum committee draft policy language, um. Mr. Dr. Mingle, thoughts?
Yeah. So, um, thank you, Mrs. Zahn. We did talk about that. Remind, was it three years ago when we went through the whole policy adoption process, right?
Indeed.
That, um, any, that I bring to you, whatever the Strauss ESMA model is, if there are things I have to choose, I bring you the administrative recommendation, any other changes, because they come from Strauss ESMA, we're protected by the fact that we're relying on guidance from a legal policy writing organization. If we're going to make changes, then our legal counsel will have to review. I would also run it by Strauss ESMA, just so you know, because, you know, they know the policies and this is what they do. So we would get advice from both of them before it came back to a board agenda.
Any further discussion about this? Otherwise, Mrs. Leonat, could you please?
Certainly. Ms. Amber Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Balish?
Yes.
Mr. Bishi?
Yes.
Mr. Brzee?
Yeah.
Mrs. DiMaggio?
Abstain.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Abstain.
And Mr. Bellman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That completes agenda item 12. With that, we're moving on to unfinished business. I'm not aware of any unfinished business, but if any other board member has some unfinished business, please let me know. Give it another five seconds. It seems that there is no unfinished business, new business. I have not been made aware of any new business item, but once again, if any board member has a new business item, please raise your hand, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom. Otherwise I'll close that in some seconds. I see none. Moving on to public commentary. Any topic, the same rules as before. Please provide your name and address and limit your participation to three minutes. We'll have a 15-minute block of public commentary. After these 15 minutes, we need approval from the board members to extend it in case of extension. Once again, please use the raise your hand feature. To access the raise your hand feature, please click on the bottom on participants. This opens up a separate window, and there you can click on raise your hand, the blue hand symbol. I can see Lauren Castan, Castagna. Please go ahead, Ms. Lauren, uh, Ms. Castagna.
Hi, sorry, I'm at soccer practice, so I apologize for being outside. Um, I just have a question. I signed on late. Oh, Lauren Castagna, nine Monday late. Sorry. Um, I signed on a little late. I'm curious if we are going to get an updated hybrid calendar. As of now, it's September through November. I don't know if any December dates have been, um, decided. And I also want to say how excited, oh, I try to like myself, sorry, how excited my kindergartner was to go back five days and set up his, um, permanent cubby. So I'm really appreciative of you guys for doing such a good job to get him back five days. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much. Mrs. Singleton, please go ahead.
Rachel Singleton, 22, Dewa Trail West. Um, I'm a bit perplexed while we're talking about the gifted and talented program. Um, can we get basic education back to full speed before we start on the gifted children? Some kids can only do the gifted and talented program when their IEP modifications are met to help them manage their regular learning needs. Can we get basic education sorted out before we move on to give some kids what they need to take them even further when there are some kids who need what they need now in order to just keep their heads above, above water? And, and to the point that you want to make, um, gifted and talented more inclusive, the whole point of being gifted and talented is that you are not in the same lump as everybody else, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Miss Singleton. Moving on to Ms. Tanya McAuliffe. Please go ahead.
Hi. Um, good evening, Tanya McAuliffe, One Sands Oldwood Drive. Um, first, I just want to thank you all, the board of ed, the administrators, the teachers and staff, especially the students, for doing a yeoman's effort, you know, throughout the summer and to date, uh, for a successful hybrid program. Unfortunately, my son is doing well, but this actually is apropos because, you know, if you're going to talk about the gifted and talented curriculum, um, you know, I would like, uh, further examination for the E2 program. And, uh, I know this has been talked about and touched on in previous meetings, but, uh, and I also know that Dr. Cooper is actually supporting additional teachers in the classroom. So it's very challenging, but nonetheless, for those students that are thriving, that are doing well, that need additional academic achievement, um, you know, and it kind of eliminates some of the parent, um, additional supplemental help that we may do privately or may do on our own. We would love to possibly get the Z2 program back, um, up to speed. Obviously, we've got the assessments back. Uh, so I just want to bring it to the table, and if you seriously consider it maybe for January, um, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. McAuliffe. Mr. Philip Jones, I'm sorry. It seems that you were about, Ms. McAuliffe. I'm not sure how I missed that. Please go ahead.
Ladies first, by all means. Um, so my name is Philip Jones. I'm a teacher at Mount Horb School, and I apologize ahead of time for reading. Uh, I wanted to try and get this in in the three minutes, and I tend to go on and on. So, um, good evening. My name is Philip Jones, and I wear many hats in the school district, um, each providing a unique perspective on our current situation. First, I'm a third grade teacher at Mount Horb School. In this role, like many educators, I'm happy to be an essential worker back in my school building and proud to be succeeding in the challenge of simultaneously teaching students in three separate cohorts, in school and at home, covering a full day of academics in four hours, including a brand-new math program, while maintaining social distancing and health protocols at all times, as well as supporting the social emotional needs of my students. It's been hard, and I, like many of my colleagues, felt great trepidation in returning to the classroom while dealing with issues of safety, childcare, and concerns about my own efficacy in the hybrid model. But we brush those worries aside to do the work that needed to be done. I thank the board and the community for recognizing that work for its rigor and its necessity. I'm also the proud vice president of the Warren Township Education Association. This role has shown me that all, all that it takes to make a school district, even one as small as ours, operate. I also hear the worries and frustrations of our members who are pushing themselves to their limits and beyond to provide an education, a safe harbor, and some sense of normalcy to the most vulnerable members of our community. I have personally witnessed members go beyond the call of duty to deliver materials to the homes of remote learners on their way home from work. I know our members have dramatically increased their availability to students and parents, including frequent and off-hour communication. I've seen members who are working from home for the safety of themselves or high-risk family members spend every minute of their days on a Google Meet, often foregoing breaks for bathroom preparation and eating to make sure that their students and their students' parents have someone there when they need help. Teachers are givers. They're the people who put the oxygen mask on their neighbor before themselves, and they are happy to sacrifice for the good of their students. For that, I thank the board for negotiating a sidebar agreement, which I hope will be ratified tonight, to allow these dedicated educators some flexibility and added safety by performing team planning functions from home one day per week. This small gesture will help us help your children. Speaking of negotiations, as negotiations team chair for the WTEA during our recent contract talks, I would like to say how proud I am of the way that we work together to create a fair contract by approaching the issues rationally and cordially. This has built a more positive working relationship between the association, board, and superintendent than I have seen in 15 years in this district, a necessity during this public health emergency. I thank the board and Dr. Mingle for doing their part to make this happen. Finally, and perhaps most importantly, I'm also a parent. My son is a second grader in neighboring Martinsville, so I see what pandemic schooling looks like in other places. What a difference a couple miles make. Warren schools have accomplished things that other districts are just starting to figure out seven months later. This is thanks to the hard work and dedication of every teacher, support staff member, school administrator, board member, and family. If we continue to help each other, we will weather this pandemic together. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Mr. Jones. I really appreciate your contribution. Um, Mrs. Anna Pereira, please go ahead.
Hi, yes, Anna Pereira, 190 Mountain Year Road. I have two, um, concerns. My first one is when you send a form every morning for us to fill out, and you, when you fill it out and you come to the cushion, allergies, a cold, whatever it is, but the child does not have a fever, and you do put that he does have a runny nose and he has, uh, a cough, and it tells you, you have to stay home that day. So, but the child is okay to go to school. He doesn't have the fever for over 48 hours. He, you've taken him to the doctor, there's no issue. What is the procedure going from that? Now, if the child stays home and does remote learning, are they, like, are they being marked as working from home? What are, what is, like, it should not say that they have to stay home when they just have a runny nose when we're going about to go into allergy season. Second thing, my child used to get extra help since he was in kindergarten. He's now a third grader. All of a sudden, this year, it completely stopped. I don't understand why. I've reached out to the principal. Thank you very much for reaching out, Mrs. Sharkey. The teachers, I have no issue, but I have not gotten a note from either of his teachers. So if they used to get extra help, why isn't the kids getting extra help now? They were getting reading, they were getting math. Where are these teachers that they had extra help from? Those are my questions.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Pereira. I see no further raised hands. If, oh, Mr. W, please go ahead.
Thanks. Hi. I'd like to just go back to the policy change on 1648.02. My question again is how the district is complying with the July 24th guidance from the Department of Education. That guidance document clearly states at a minimum that districts must provide procedures to transition from full time remote learning to in-person services. That includes defining a minimum amount of time a student must spend in full time remote learning before being eligible to transition to in-person learning. It also says that you need to have a clear defined procedure for that family to submit a request to transition from full time remote learning to in-person services, including relevant timelines, points of contact, so on and so forth. It also goes on to say that the district must define the specific student and academic services that will accompany a student's transition. I'm not seeing that as part of the, the current policy change that's proposed, and I still am unclear on how the board intends to adopt the policy and retroactively make it apply to the hybrid 1.1 model when that policy was not in place at the time that the parents were voting on whether or not to send their kids back to, back to school or not. The policy that was in place and in effect at the time that the hybrid 1.1 model question and the survey were sent out was not the proposal that is before the board today. The, the policy that was in place provided that you had up to 30 days to request a change, you were not limited at what time and when you can make that accommodation request. And I'd like to understand what legal basis the board believes that they have. And, and I'm talking about a legal basis outside of the, the survey, because that, that information was not even disclosed to parents at the time. So I'd like a full explanation for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. W. I can see Mrs. Mariette. Please go ahead.
Hi, Mariette Altovich, 18 King George Road. I had a question, actually. So for people who, for some reason, like, so I know, I, I just heard about this, that there were from, from the board meeting tonight that, like, say, for example, somebody was exposed to COVID-19 and they are in for all person. They are in the model for being in person and now they have to quarantine for 14 days. I'm, I'm fine. I totally understand that. I don't want to get anybody sick. However, just because my kids or another kid, anybody's kid, has to quarantine for 14 days, doesn't mean that they're actually sick. And can, but the current model for in person doesn't provide for that. How do, how do they do their work? Because if they're sick, they should just recover and re redo it when they're better. But if you have, just because you have to quarantine, it doesn't mean that you're actually sick and to miss two weeks worth of work and to try to, how, how do, how do we make that happen to make sure that that, that's for younger kids in particular, that's real, that could be overwhelming to try to make up. And, and then you could come back into class and be incredibly lost. So I would, I was wondering if the board could send out more information about what would happen in terms of that situation.
Mrs. Mariette, I would ask a clarifying question here. Are you talking about specific K to two in the hybrid 1.1? Or 325, 328 in the hybrid 1.0?
Well, definitely for the K to two, because they're in full time currently and they would, they don't actually have the option to, if you're in full time, to be in the, the virtual learning, because first of all, that's a disservice to the virtual learners, them popping in and out, because they have access to the pre-recorded videos, maybe. Not necessarily participate in those classes, because like I said, the virtual learners, that's not fair to them and I wouldn't want to put that on them. But at the same time, like, to be asked to quarantine for two weeks and then to have nothing to go by is, is a lot. Now, for the kids who are in three and above, they, I'm hoping would have access to, just they're, just they would just be able to stay at home like they would in the hybrid 1.0 and still participate in school regularly. But I, I don't know, maybe they're not allowed to. I, I don't, I don't, I don't know.
Hence my clarifying question. Thank you very much. Mrs. Altsicker, please go ahead.
Hi, Melissa Oldsaker, 8 Cherry Tree Lane. Forgive me if this is something that was discussed previously, but now that it's actually happening in school, it might just be that I don't recall what the correct answer is, but when somebody tests positive for COVID, I was wondering what the actual protocol is for coming back, because I recently was told that they don't have to have a negative test before returning to school. And I just wanted to get some clarification on that. Please.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Altsicker.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mrs. Jaclyn Jockey. Please go ahead.
Hi, Jaclyn Jockey from Nine Heritage Drive. I just wanted to add on to what Mariette had said about the full in-person K through two learners for which there is no alternative remote in the event that they are sick or, I guess, have to quarantine. I know that was discussed at the pre-meetings by Dr. Smith for ALT, or Mrs. Smith for ALT. But I guess my question is, would there at all be the possibility of some sort of live streaming mode? While I know the district has said that that's not ideal for learning, it could be potentially an option for those children for whatever reason, if they travel out of state, for example, that's another reason where they would not be allowed. Or certain states, they would not be allowed to be in school for 12, for 14 days. And two whole weeks lost in school with no alternative curriculum for them could be very detrimental to their learning and some circumstances may be unavoidable. And I think live streaming might be a means for them to somewhat follow along if they're in that situation that perhaps doesn't disrupt all the other components. So, thank you. That's it.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Jockey. Reached the end of our first 15 minute block. There are two more contributors on the erase your hand list. Does any board member want to make any motion to extend? Mr. Breezy, could you please go ahead?
Sure, can we make a motion to extend public commentary?
15 minutes?
Yes, please.
Second, Bellish.
Board members only. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Public commentary is extended 15 minutes.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Silver, please go ahead.
Terribly sorry. Heather Silver, 35 Quail Run. Thank you, everyone, for your time tonight and your comments. I just wanted to touch on two things that were said. While I realize the students that have IEPs are being neglected, as well as the gifted children, both ends of that spectrum need to be addressed. Just as in ALT right now, Dr. Klein, our IND teacher is being wasted tremendously, sitting and watching the Go Guardian computer. I want to acknowledge that getting the children all back in for general education needs to obviously be the first thing. And while Mr. Franco pointed out that the language needs to acknowledge that all children are, children's needs are met. I do agree with him in saying that all children's needs will not be met until all the children are back in school. So, Mr. Franco, I appreciate that comment. But Mr. Jones, as much as all of the support has gone out to the teachers, the parents and the families and the community have done nothing but praise the teachers for the time that they have given to this process. Unfortunately, there are, you point out that, you know, Warren has done it better than Martinsville, and I am sorry that Martinsville hasn't met the needs of your children, but unfortunately, there are districts that figured out how to do it all now and get them back in. So those are the models that we need to be following, and those are the instructions that we need to be tapping into, to those that have already figured it out and see how that can apply to our town. And all of the taxes that we put into our school system and the dedication of the families and the PTOs that support it. That should be the focus, getting these children in and then expanding upon that spectrum of children that need additional help and children that need advanced help. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Silver. Moving on to Mrs. Rosa Kraus, please go ahead.
Rosa Kraus, 2 Holly Drive. I just wanted to touch up on one of the things that one of the other parents spoke about, which is the attendance policy. So we are getting into flu season. If a child, according to the diagram that we received, if a child does not have a fever, if a child is providing documentation that is not infectious in any way by, via flu, strep, whichever, it just has a runny nose, it has a cough, but none of it, which is contagious, is sent to school. The school gets cleared by the school nurse, goes to the, the classroom, the teacher doesn't feel comfortable. The child is sent home. Make a long story short, the child is sent home. When the child is sent home, logs on. And then when it logs on from home, does distance, distance learning, is now being marked absent. I'd like to understand the, the, a little bit of the, of the concept behind that. We understand that was their day to be physical present in school, but instead of wasting a day, the child now logs on, does it virtually, it's still being marked absent. I'd like to understand a little bit of the, the concept behind, if, if we have the, the capability of doing distance learning, whether the, it was his day or not to be in school, why can't he do a distance learning? Why does he need to be marked absent? So that's the first question. And why isn't there consistency across the schools in town? Because it's, I've been made aware that what applies to the middle school is not applying to the woodland school or to the, the central school. So every school seems to have its own policy. So I'd like somebody to address the, the absence policy also. That's it for me.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Kraus. I just noticed that one of the previous speaker referred to a comment from a different speaker. Please direct all the feedback just to me. We, in these discussions, we are not mentioning other speakers. Just want to mention that as per our policy. And let's move on with Ms. DeCruz, DeCruz, please.
Hi, Denise Corso, 2 Sterling Road. I just want to touch back on the subject. We did fill out the survey. We did check a box. However, when we checked that box, we were provided with a policy stating the 30 days. If we're removing that tonight, is there going to be action moving forward to provide us with a different survey in, and you know, if we need to review this again? That's number one. Number two is, can we please address how we are waiting for students to catch up? It's, I, I feel that my son in remote learning today, he, he was coloring while others were catching up. And that is a disservice. I think that they should be moving with their peers from their collective schools. And I think that playing catch up is just unacceptable in a remote learning instance. They're already slightly behind because of the disadvantage of doing everything remotely. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Corso. Right now, I don't see any further members of the public raising their hand. I'll give it another 10 seconds. Otherwise, I will pass it on to administration to answer questions that we heard in the section. I see none. Was that I will close it and hand it over to administration to answer questions that we heard?
Thank you, Mr. Bellman. We started with, when will we get an updated hybrid calendar? So we're waiting for the high school to make decisions about their hybrid rotation, because we don't want to get into another situation where we announce a rotation and then something changes there. They obviously can't adapt to four different sending districts, so they have to go first. It's on my calendar of things. We want to get that out before the end of October, so that you know the next several months well in advance for what the rotation looks like. So that is coming. The question about hoping that the E2 program would be up and running by January, I can say that it is our mission that that will happen much sooner than January. We've done work about staffing that will allow us to make that change at the middle school. So I think that'll be, I don't want to make a, a date certain promise, but that is something that's a high priority at the middle school right now. Mr. Valar has already made adjustments to make that happen sooner. Good questions about other symptoms, and I'm glad somebody brought that up. And actually, I made a note that that should be something I put out in the community briefing for everybody. So the guidance from the Department of Health is always about COVID-like symptoms. And it's very difficult to know, obviously, we all know this, right? Congestion doesn't mean it's COVID. It could just be congestion. The guidance from the Department of Health says absent another diagnosis, we have to treat it as if it's COVID unless we have a different diagnosis. So if there's a child who has, you know, regular seasonal allergies or some other health condition where those symptoms might be common, I would highly encourage parents to reach out to their school nurse now and get that documentation in place, because that'll make it much easier. You know, a month from now or whenever that becomes an issue. If that happens on a day to day basis, we can get a diagnosis and then we can make different responses to it. So that's something we could work through. It's not perfect, but because even somebody with allergies, it could be COVID. So it's very difficult to, to work that out, but the nurses can definitely help with that. The question about why extra help stop is difficult for me to answer generically. It depends on which extra help it was. So, for example, we have a Title I extra help program in some schools that was just reauthorized at the last meeting, so that'll take place. If that's the program it was, if it's ASAP, it depends on the grade and the situation, because some of those teachers are teaching as homeroom teachers right now. So that could be the answer. The school would be at the best place to get the specifics for that individual family. Questions about what happens if there's an exposure issue in a quarantine? So if a student is required to quarantine because they are potentially positive with COVID, or they are a first person contact with somebody who is, and they're ordered to quarantine by the Department of Health guidelines, we continue providing instruction if the student is well enough to attain it. So in the K2 level, that'll be the same person, if they're an in-person student, it'll be the same person as they see for in-person. And these are the kinds of things we can't fully develop until we deal with the situation. But today was day one of hybrid 1.1, and today we had a student on distance learning in kindergarten, even though that was the whole thing we were moving past. Teacher did a great job on day one of making it work. So that varies from classroom to classroom. It depends on how many students are involved, but absolutely, if the student is well enough, they can continue if they're in a quarantine situation. In 3A, it's easier because it's, they basically are just treated as if they're in the distance cohort on that, on those days. That doesn't apply on a day to day basis, though. That's the information that might be confusing. So if a student is absent for a day, it's difficult for us to put into place all the different procedures to make that work. If we know it's going to be for two weeks, then the investment in time and energy to have the teacher prepare for multiple settings, you heard this, you've heard this, me talk about this before, and you've heard it in other comments, it's extremely difficult for teachers to plan for both in-person and at home at the same time. And so if it's, we, we can't do is have, like, a student decide one day, they just don't want to go to school today, and they're going to stay home and do distance. And that's where the attendance coding comes from. So we actually have three. And that's where the attendance coding comes from. So we actually have three different codes for attendance right now. We have present. We have absent, which we always have. And then we have one that's really an internal code where a student is supposed to be present. But they don't come to school and they access the learning virtually. We actually code that in our system now. It's not what we prefer for students on a day to day basis. We can't have like individual school districts. We have to run a system. But that allows us to make it clear because we're accountable for students when they're in school and we need to be able to report to the state, you know. 10 students who were supposed to be in school didn't come in today. So that's why. Any concerns, I talked, I did talk to one parent about this directly last week. Any concerns about like those codes are going to make it so a student can't go from fourth grade to fifth grade or seventh grade? None of that is true. That's not an issue. The attendance policy. A lot has to happen before somebody would lose credit. It's all handled on a case by case basis at the building level. So that's not something people should be concerned about. If a student is sick for one day, for example, if they're sick for a day or two, they can make up the work just like under any other circumstances and we'll handle that. Again, like, like in, in a, in a regular school system setting. But in the quarantine where they're out for 14 days or 10 days, depending on the situation, we will continue to provide instruction as long as they're well enough to receive it. The questions about sorry, attendance policy, I just talked about that. Oh, and so consistency, this is something we review all the time. There are a lot of different situations and a lot of individualized situations. There are times when it might appear that something is happening, like a student is just home for a day and taking, but maybe they had a medical situation that other people in class don't know about that we can't talk about. So sometimes it seems like one thing when it's actually something else, but we'll review to make sure that it's consistently applied. I don't feel comfortable addressing the comments about the, about a legal basis for the policy. If the board would like me to get legal counsel on that question, I can do that, but it came from our, you know, our policy writing service. And so it's, I don't know that I have the authority or the, the personal knowledge. I rely on people to advise us on that kind of thing. And one last thing, sorry. I've heard a couple of people in various meetings mention other school districts. I am more than happy to call the superintendent of any school district in the state of New Jersey and ask them what they're doing. If it's better or more successful. There have been people who have shared with us, you know, like, hey, check out what insert school district is doing with their elementary school special education students. We will follow up on those things if people name specific places. We meet at the county level. We're meeting now every other week instead of every week. So if it's in Somerset County, it's super easy. And all within the Watchon Hills area, we meet all the time. And constantly in every one of our districts, you know, like right now, if there's a board meeting in Long Hill, somebody is saying we should do in Long Hill what they're doing in Warren and somebody in Warren might say we should do what they're doing in Watchon for something else. We're happy to learn from each other. If there's a district somewhere else in the state, I'm happy to reach out as well. That can be sent via email, whatever people prefer.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. I assume that this was the end of the question, answer.
Sorry, I should, one last thing that I missed. It's not the legal question about the, the policy change. The policy, the policy does not change anything about process. So there's still a process outlined in the policy for how parents make requests. Even, and it has to go through a second review before it becomes official anyway, but even under that draft policy, the only thing changes that it says resources available as opposed to saying date certain. So the process is still the same. The district has 30 days to respond to the request. All that is still the same. And we'll make sure that it gets published when the board passes.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mingle. With that, I assume that there's nothing else outstanding and we can move on to agenda item 16. Mrs. Song, could you please?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, Bellman.
Board members only. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Abstentions? Have a wonderful evening, everyone.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody. Have a wonderful.